Okay, good evening. It's 5:01, so why don't we begin? This is a meeting of the Finance Subcommittee on motions that were referred here. So before we begin, Mr. Clark, could you please call a roll?
Chairman Elliott.
Here.
Counsel Conway.
Here.
Counsel New.
Here.
Re-President.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Baldwin, for joining us. I see the auditor is also in the audience. If you'd like to come and join us over here. He'll be sitting in Counselor Conway's seat, so... There's candy in the drawer. It's not very good candy, but there's candy. So with that, as I mentioned, Madam Manager, information was presented to the Council Committee, I think it was two weeks ago, and it was good information. But as we move forward, I think it's important to get a little bit more information. That was a good snapshot of where we are, and we're at some of the issues that we're faced with this year. So that's the purpose of this meeting, just to get an update and get a little bit more detail on some of the challenges. So with that, I'll stop. Counsel Chow has joined us as well. So with that, why don't we proceed, knowing that there's another Subcommittee meeting that we've scheduled after this? So with that, the good news is that we do have additional local aid coming, particularly on the school side. So the flip side, we have some additional assessments of charter school and other obligations, and the local aid that we have received from the state is significant, but the increase is around $800,000. So good news, but good news, bad news, if you will. So with that, Madam Manager and Mr. Baldwin and our auditor. Let me also say, before we proceed, we also have Counsel Dr. Water that has joined us. Madam Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of the Subcommittee. You are correct, there are challenges ahead with the budget. At this early stage, Mr. Baldwin has put together some important information for the Subcommittee and the Council. At this point of the year, we have numbers from the Governor's Budget, which gives us some idea of what we might be looking at. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, for Chapter 70 and local aid, those are subject to change, but it at least gives us a start point. Obviously, as a gateway community, we look to those receipts from the state very heavily, and they weigh heavily in our assessment. But if there's no objection, I'll turn this over to Mr. Baldwin, the CFO, who can walk us through the presentation that he's prepared.
Okay. No objections from the Subcommittee members?
No.
Questions before we begin? Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam Manager. So just to provide an update to the Subcommittee, we are well underway on the fiscal year 2021 budget. This past Friday, budget requests from the departments were due to the Finance Office, so we are currently reviewing all of those, plugging them into our 2021 budget model, and we will have some additional information on the department requests in the not-so-distant future. The slide on the screen here kind of walks through the budget calendar, looking forward through the spring. So throughout March and then into early April, we will review departmental budgets, review our revenue estimates, and refine them as the budget moves through the state process in terms of our unrestricted aid, other cherry-sheet charges, et cetera, and fixed costs as those become more solid. And we do anticipate around the same time for the past several years, May 26th, for the vote to accept timely submission of the budget and the appropriation order, as well as the budget books to be delivered to the City Council. So there will be a public hearing two weeks after that, at which time the public can comment on the budget, and the Council will take it up at that time. So at one of the recent City Council meetings, the City Manager provided to the Council an update on the Governor's Budget, which was delivered several weeks ago. This slide on the screen kind of highlights at a very high level the local aid accounts. The big story in the 2021 state budget is the increase to the Chapter 70 account. So we're looking at approximately $12.8 million in additional Chapter 70 from the Governor's proposal. The reimbursement to charter schools increased by a pretty significant amount. You'll see when we talk a little bit about assessments that the charter school assessment rose as well by an even greater amount. The unrestricted aid, which is essentially what the city uses for everything else, police, fire, other municipal expenses, increased by just under $750,000. And then there are some other accounts that fluctuated just a little bit, plus or minus, for a total increase of over $15 million, the lion's share of that being the Chapter 70 increase. Please feel free to stop me at any time with any questions, but I'll just run through the rest of these slides. So taking a look at our anticipated increase on the cost side that we know of at this point, our debt service is scheduled to increase by about $2.5 million next year. Now that is principal and interest payments associated with the city's aggressive capital campaign, so over the past several years, a lot of the road work, bridge work, other types of capital improvements for parks, et cetera, paying the full debt service on those. The pension assessment from PERACT is just under $1.5 million in 2021. And right now, the GIC commissioners have not voted on the rates for next year, but we have early indications that the increase will be anywhere from 3% to 5%, which could translate to about 3/4 of a million to $1.2 million in the health insurance account for next year. Solid waste and recycling, which we're going to talk a little bit more about, is scheduled for another just-under-million-dollar increase next year, and that's associated with the newer contract with Waste Management. And then the cherry-sheet assessments, which include the charter school assessment, as well as assessments for LRTA, mosquito control, and some other smaller accounts. School choice, which we talked a little bit about at the full Council meeting last time, is scheduled to increase by $3.5 million on the whole, for a total fixed cost increase of just under $9 million. So I mentioned that the departmental requests have been received by the Finance Department. We are looking to try as best as possible from within the budget for '21 to increase the accounts for school building repairs, and also, as we do each year, to reduce the amount of one-time revenues from other revolving accounts, special revenue accounts, to support the budget, to build a more structurally sound budget. So to talk about the other side of the ledger of the revenue, I mentioned our increase to unrestricted aid is just under $750,000. The FY 2020 approved tax levy was $138.3 million. So just to put that in perspective, a 1% increase to the levy would gain an additional $1.4 million in revenue. A 2.5% increase would be just under $3.5 million in additional revenue from taxes. And it's worth pointing out that excess levy capacity, which we've talked about for quite some time in this Council chamber, that's the amount of money under the Prop 2.5 limit at which the city taxes, now stands at about $20.6 million. When I first started here as the Chief Financial Officer, that number was about $12 or $13 million, and it's real... Each time that the city taxes under the 2.5% sort of guideline from Department of Revenue, that number grows, and it's a testament to the conservative tax policy of the city. The FY 20 estimate for local receipts, as was approved by the Department of Revenue, is just about $24 million. And then looking forward to FY 2021, in terms of how to make up the difference between the anticipated new revenue and the known fixed cost increases for next year, we will have marijuana excise money coming in, so there is one retail marijuana location that is open. We will have one full year's worth of excise receipts, as well as the community impact funds associated with that location. It's possible that other locations may open. The investment income, and this is something that I put on here because it's worth noting, the city has become a little bit more aggressive because of the markets with our investments, and the earnings associated with our strong cash position have led to an increase in investment earnings. This is Counsel Mercy had mentioned at the last budget hearing about looking towards the MMDT and other investment vehicles for earnings, which was something we took advantage of, and that has had significant results, so we look to increase that revenue. Another thing that we are looking towards would be reviewing the schedule of fees and trying to make any necessary adjustments for achieving cost recovery, making sure that the fee schedule is set commensurate with the cost that the city incurs for performing certain services. So that's something that we'd like to talk about a little bit more in the future. The last time that the fee schedule was amended in a comprehensive way was in the fall of 2016. As I mentioned, the objective then, as it would be again, is cost recovery. So looking at the expenses, whether it's labor or other professional services associated with providing certain municipal services, and making sure that our fees are set at an appropriate level with those, there have been some Council requests over the last year or so related to, you know, looking at the fees for illegal dumping, looking at the trash fee, solid waste and recycling, as well as some of the offshoots of the solid waste and recycling fee for the reduced-size totter for trash, an elderly discount, and that would be something that the Council would need to amend the ordinance to accomplish. You know, one of the major fixed cost increases that we talked about is in trash collection and disposal. We do have as part of the contract contamination charge associated with contamination recycling, contaminated recycling, rather, and trying to set the fee in a way that doesn't add the additional costs to the tax levy, but rather is more of a fee structure is something that we'd like to look at, as well as looking at some of the components of the water usage, engineering fees, and other fees on the schedule. So finally, and just to put the discussion of trash collection and disposal into perspective, this graph on the screen here outlines the difference between the amount of revenue collected by the city from the trash fee currently. So those are the blue bars, looking historically back to FY 2012. The difference between that and the actual cost of providing the service, so that's the cost for the Waste Management contract, as well as the disposal contract with wheel operator, where we incinerate the trash. So you can see how that delta, the amount subsidized by the tax levy, was consistently around $2.5, $2 million from 2012 through 2019, which was the period of the last trash contract. But anticipated as we get to FY 2020 through 2025, with the new contract with Waste Management, if the fee schedule is not amended in some way, that subsidy will grow exponentially over the next five years. And that is, those are those red bars for '21 through '25, and if an amendment is not made, it will grow to just under $5 million in 2025 based on our contracted cost with Waste Management. So that's the end of the presentation, and I look forward to any questions the Subcommittee may have.
Thank you, Connor. I think that's a good presentation. It really identifies our challenges and some positives as well. I'll open up before... I'll open up to the Subcommittee for questions and answers. I'm sure there's a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions. But in large part, you know, the economy is going well, and the city is in sound fiscal shape. What troubles me are these, you know, the assessments from the state, as another one sounding like a broken record, because we've gone on record, we've sent resolutions, we've asked for home rule petitions, particularly when it comes to the charter school reimbursements. We understand it's public education, and if it is public education, then that should be factored into the formula, and we shouldn't be reimbursed on 25%. The city's picking up the 75%. So when we go to look to hold the line on taxes, some of these costs are completely out of our control, and I think it's grossly unfair as a result of the schools. We understand kids need to be educated, and charter schools are part of the system. But if it's public education, then fund it as public education. We're grateful from the state and our legislators, and not casting dispersions by any stretch. But it's a real burden to this city. And as we look at holding the line and having levy capacity, and we're doing our job, and I've seen it with this administration and the Chief Financial Officer, you know, when we see revenue is short on some of our, you know, areas that we can control, whether it's local receipts, or permits, or the economy slows, we look at hiring freezes, we look at expense freezes, and I know that you've done it, Madam Manager, once, if not twice, to make sure we keep our balance, budgeted balance. So, you know, that aside, I'll go to members of the Subcommittee, and then I would like to have a longer discussion, particularly about the trash collection. I think it'll warrant a meeting in itself to get a little bit more information to present to the full Council on where we are with not only the new contract. Trash has become big business, it's become very expensive, our recyclables, as a result of some countries not accepting them. That's become a cost instead of a revenue generator, which, you know, certainly was not the intended purpose, but we have to deal with it. So, but I think that warrants a separate meeting because it is a long discussion, and we have to look at what we're collecting, and quite frankly, what is costing the taxpayers? I know most taxpayers use the trash, but... And I don't know if there's any other cases where... I know with water sewer, we adjust it because we have the university, we have hospitals, but trash may be a separate, a little bit distinct from that. So before... I know there's other members of the Subcommittee. Counsel Mercy has joined us also. Mr. Conway, Mr. New, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Connor Baldwin. The 3% to 5% increase in the GIC insurance, that's the estimate for next year, is this something that we're seeing across the board with other municipalities that are towns that might have this insurance?
That projected increase would be consistent across the board for all communities that participate in the GIC.
Okay, all right. The charter schools, and I think Counsel Elliot, you know, certainly brought this out. In fact, the charter schools with its formula is certainly off... I think it's really eating away at us, and I know you people are doing the best you can to hold the line, and I think the Council is obviously here to help out on that. And I think you've done a great job, and you do get to the point. I don't know how long you can keep on holding the line when we find that there's a disproportionate amount of money that is spent each year. And I think what we have to do, and I know we've reached out to the state before, but I think we have to, again, perhaps have a Subcommittee specifically on that to talk about, how do we approach this? I mean, what's the smartest way that we can explain to them that we have to function as a municipality, we have to pay our bills, and yet their increases are much more substantial than what we can really handle? The trash situation, again, that's something, and I've talked about it before, and I think it's important, and I'd like to have some expert tell me that my thinking is either wrong or right. I don't know. But it seems as though we're not getting it correct, what we're doing. And, you know, people, I think, are very confused on what needs to go in and what doesn't need to go in. I think, you know, we've sat here, I don't know how many times, we've talked about, well, the information is on the website. To be quite frank with you, I think there are very, very few people that go on to the website. So I don't think we're getting our message out there. You know, you have highly educated individuals that want to do recycling, but they don't know exactly what it is. And again, I've heard from some people that say that, you know, they limit it. They take a look and find out from the experts. What are the items that are the most, whether it's paper, or cardboard, or cans, or glass, or whatever it is? And why not concentrate on those specific areas? Granted, it's not 100% of the recycle, but if we can get 70% correct, I think we're much better off. And then additionally, after a period of, let's say, six months, or nine months, or whatever it may be, if we get this right, and we're showing that we're meeting our obligation there, and perhaps saving some money, why not add on another item, whatever that item may be? So I'd like to see that next time we talk to the trash experts, that they can certainly, you know, investigate that, see if it makes any sense. And the last point I just wanted to make too is that we, as a Council, have gone through some uncomfortable moments with the unpaid bills, or misunderstanding bills, whatever you want to call it, from the school department. And I think at that time, we did talk about meeting on a regular basis where the finance people on the city side would meet with the school department. Is that happening now? And are we... Do you find that we're having a better communication and a better understanding of, you know, what the left hand is doing versus the right hand?
Yes, Counselor, through you, Mr. Chair. I would say that the relationship with the schools is good at this point. We have monthly finance team meetings with the City Auditor, with the school department, as well as all the other departments on the finance team, and the communication has certainly improved as of recently.
Great. I think that's going to make a difference at the end of the year, so that we're not shuffling around trying to find ways of paying for bills that we didn't expect at the time. So I applaud you people for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Conway, Counsel New.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I concur with Mr. Chairman's that this is a very, you know, good report, forward-looking report, but there still remain a concern, a number of concerns that I hope that we can really pick one of those topic, you know, address it, the next meeting or meeting afterwards around the issues of charter school reimbursement, as well as school choice reimbursement. I was surprised, I know that charter school reimbursement, I'm aware of it, but then again, school choice, you pay a student to go to a surrounding neighborhood, you know, surrounding, like say Drake, you know, Baricas and whatnot, and this is absurd. I mean, if the school's not doing well, say Robinson's not doing well, we should put resources, the school department should put resources to make that school better, rather than giving, you know, kid either half or full of what that student entitled to other city and town. It's just absurd. And the other thing that concerns me is that the Chairman spoke of is the recycling and issues, and we need to get a hold of it, you know. So I'm looking forward to a more in-depth discussion on those two fronts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Can we just continue this conversation just a little bit when it comes to school choice? Counsel Mercy brought it up, and we discussed it at a prior Subcommittee, Council meeting, we actually got a report on it. Do we have any further information on, A, who allows it, or who voted for it, or what the formula is? And I understand if there is a school that's underperforming, that is one of the criteria that'll allow a student to go out of district, but I think considering the magnitude of resources that we get from the state and the taxpayers of this city put in, in addition to all the infrastructure improvements that we've made and that we're making, seems like someone living in Lowell can get a great education at any of our schools, even those that may be underperforming. And we do address that. I can recall as the mayor, there are steps that we take. So do we know anything further, Madam Manager? Are we waiting for a report?
We are waiting for a report. We did ask the Law Department to look at this issue and get back to us in terms of, you know, how it's determined, when it's voted, what our options are, especially what our options are, working together with the school department in terms of shoring up some of the assets that we have.
Okay. We don't pay to bus these students out of district. Could we find that out?
We'll find that out.
Please, because I... Again, I can recall many, many... And by the way, to the folks at home watching, this is not special education funding. These are just students, their parents, for some reason, have opted out of Lowell School District to go somewhere else. And again, it's not charter schools, because we talked about charter schools. So I think it's important to get that clarification, because we're receiving less money from the state, and it's costing us to send people, you know, residents of Lowell, the students out of district. So I think that's, you know, the Counsel New's point, that warrants a longer discussion and who voted for it, or who votes for it, and, you know, what are the reasons, and is it necessary, and should we change it, in my opinion? With that, there are other members of the City Council here. Any other questions? I do want to go to the auditor and ask some questions. So Counsel Chow, Dr. Water, Mercy, Counsel Mercy.
To add on to what you're saying about school choice, it's my understanding that we can only allow our students to go to communities that have an agreement with us, right. So how many communities are that? Is that... Do we have a waiting list? Do we have a figure that we can't go over a certain amount? I'm concerned, because I believe that when the Lowell High School renovations start up, I think people are going to opt to do that, and that's... I know you probably don't want to hear it, but we have 129 students now going out. I'm wondering, what is it going to be in a couple of years? And it's very expensive. We're almost hitting $1 million, so I think it's important. Do we have a waiting list? Do we have a number? And if there's communities that we're not in partnership with, how do they get to stay out of the mix here? That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Good questions. All right.
We'll get...
I presume we're going to have another one. I mean, this is just, it's the beginning of February. I thought it was important to have a discussion, and we will meet on a regular basis. So I just wanted to take an opportunity, we're up against the end of the meeting per se, there's another... meeting per se, there's another one scheduled, I think, we can run a little. But I just wanted to welcome you. You just started, was it a month ago, six weeks ago? So Madam Auditor, welcome to Finance Subcommittee. FY '19, can you talk about it a little bit? We have, we've, we've closed it out, everything is, is fine. I know we threw you right into the mix on this, and it was being closed out, but I just want to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to, to us and the viewing, viewing audience, and if you have anything that you'd like to talk about.
Sure. Thank you for the welcome. Yes, my name's Tina Masiello. I've been here since December 2nd, 2019. Fiscal year '19 is in the wrap-up. The audit is almost complete, and the filings with, correct me if I'm wrong, Connor, Division of Local Services are almost complete as well. With that being said, fiscal year '19 was a bit of a challenge because the previous auditor did leave, and I know that you guys were looking for a while for a new auditor, but I just want to say that Mr. Baldwin's office did a great job stepping in and sort of picking up the pieces that were needed to, to get everything in time, and I'm hoping to have everything wrapped up pretty soon. Also, fiscal year '20 is rapidly ending as well, so we'll, once something has ended, fiscal year '19 has ended, we're going to jump right into fiscal year '20, and hopefully there won't be such a lag in the reports and things like that. So I apologize if there is any.
No, no apologies necessary. When you get a chance, we used to get, or we usually would like to get quarterly updates, just to see where we are with year-to-date expenditures and, you know, any outliers that may warrant attention. I suspect not, because, you know, the team in place, we, we monitor expenditures, and when there is slippage, or there are some receipts that may not, may not be, we, the administration comes in with very conservative estimates, which allows us, and rightfully so, we have free cash, unreserved fund balances, and we don't exceed our budget. So I thank, welcome again, and I know '19 was a challenge, but again, we'll thank the administration for, you know, and the consultant that we hired to make sure that, again, we're in sound fiscal condition. We've met all our obligations with the Department of Revenue, and we ended on a positive note, and we hope to end on a positive note again this year. So Counselor Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly, I, I would like to add that I, I've talked to a, a few of the representatives from the school department that have had meetings with you and discussions and so forth to try to solve some issues. And, and I will tell you, the feedback that I got was immediate, and it was extremely positive, and they said that you were very helpful, very effective, very attentive to the, the needs of what they had, and, and you solved the problem. So you made some friends over there, I know that. So again, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yes, and we are trying to meet with the school department on a regular basis as well, and work with their chief financial officer over there to try to get, you know, things to be more synergistic.
Good. So when the audit is complete, perhaps, you know, the subcommittee, I know there is a clerk audit oversight, but maybe we can have a joint meeting, because I do think it's important to go over those findings, should there be any findings, what the remedy is, and from last year as well as this year. So with that, anything else from the subcommittee? Anything else from you, Madam Manager, or Mr. Baldwin?
No, just, Mr. Chairman, we welcome the opportunity to discuss those issues, the, the recycling, very important issue, as well as the school issues and school choice, so at future meetings.
So know that we, knowing that we do have to schedule another finance subcommittee, particularly for the trash, it's, it's a, it's a great concern to all of us because of the change in the way that the disposal, the tipping fees, the recycling, you know, part of the challenge with the recycling just for the people at home, is that some of the, some of the objects, some of the recyclable items that were once considered a revenue source, or there was a market for them, no longer exists. So what we thought in the past was recycling is now trash, because there's no market for it. So they're, they're not going to take it if it's considered trash, if they can't do anything with it. So that's first and foremost. So I'd like to make a motion that we get a report and a recommendation on this, on, on the current fee, fees that we're paying, the updated contract, and any other pertinent information that you can provide for the, for the next subcommittee meeting. If there's no.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries. With that, if there's no other business before the finance subcommittee, entertain a motion to adjourn by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signified by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Good job. Yep. That will adjourn just for a moment or two. There is an Economic Development Subcommittee meeting following this meeting.